All right, good morning ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna go ahead and get started with our meeting. Thank you for coming and thank you for attending the Plan and Commission's normal monthly meeting. The meeting is being held at 8:00 AM Wednesday, January 20th, 2016. The meeting is being broadcast live on the Town's informational channel and will run several times throughout the week. I'm Keith Frost, the Plan and Commission Chair, and I will ask the other members to please introduce themselves.
Good morning, I'm Frank Berry.
Good morning Sammy Hendricks.
Good morning Brian Amick.
Good morning, Ross Koepfman.
Good morning, I'm Lisa Gibson.
Good morning, I'm Jeannie Michaels.
Good morning, I'm Jamie Feig.
Good morning, I'm John Bartlett.
Good morning, I'm Brett Poole, Town Administrator.
Good morning, I'm Kathy Manus, Town Counsel.
Good morning, I'm Brad Cunningham, Town Attorney.
Good morning, I'm Ron Williams, Town Counsel.
Good morning, Todd Barnes, Town Counsel.
Rosemary Newsom, Plan and Building Technology.
Good morning, Charlie Thomas, Building Division.
Good morning, Randy Edwards, Town Transportation Director.
Good morning, John Hanson, Plan and Director.
I'm Karen Hannah, Assistant Missland Park.
Thank you very much. At this point, I will ask Commissioner Gibson if she will lead us in invocation.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to serve, to serve our town. I pray that you would give us wisdom and guidance. I pray that you would be with those that serve and protect our town and our country, our nation, and their families and protect them. Lord, I pray that you would protect those from the cold that don't have adequate services at this point and may we be mindful of others' needs. May we always strive to serve you in everything that we do for you, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. We don't have any deletions to our agenda that I'm aware of. So the first item is approval of our meeting minutes from November 18th, 2015. You've received those in your packets. Do we have any additions, corrections?
As I move.
All right, hearing none, get a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much. All right, first item of new business is site plan approval for a commercial center located at 5326 Sunset Boulevard. John?
Good morning, welcome back. I hope everybody enjoyed their December off and had a good holiday. The first item is Columbia Development Company has submitted a site plan for a commercial center to be located at 5326 Sunset Boulevard. The development encompasses approximately 18 acres of a 24 acre site. It will have 143,000 square feet of commercial space. Access from Sunset Boulevard will occur through a signalized driveway that aligns with Palmetto Park Boulevard. A secondary driveway that accesses Saluda Springs Drive is also included in the plan. The developer submitted a traffic impact study that has been reviewed and approved by the Town Transportation Director. The primary driveway will require installation of an additional leg on the traffic signal on Sunset Boulevard. It will also include a new deceleration lane for westbound traffic and new striping for eastbound turns into the site. The plan appears to meet all zoning requirements except there's no connectivity shown or future connectivity shown on the eastern side of the property.
All right.
Can I answer any questions or representatives from Columbia Development Company are here?
All right, do we have any questions for John?
All right. I did receive several emails regarding this project. All of them have been given to you all and to the clerk for inclusion in the record.
All right, and we have someone from the developer here to speak.
I believe they have a PowerPoint presentation that will be shown on the TV screens among other information that they'll provide.
All right.
Thanks, sir.
My name's Jenkins Williamson, I'm with Columbia Development. We are retail developers. Our offices are located here in Columbia, near on Forest Drive, 1824, actually St. Julian Place, right off of Forest Drive, near Richland Mall. So we are local developers. We've been in Lexington for quite some time, working on behalf of the fresh market, trying to find a home for the fresh market in Lexington. They've had a desire to be in this community for quite some time. It took us about a year and a half to locate a site that worked for them. They wanted a couple of different things. They wanted to be on 378, they wanted signalized access, they wanted to be up on the front of the road with good prominent visibility to 378, and they wanted to be as close to the intersection of Highway 6 and 378 as possible. This was the first piece of property that met all of the criteria that they were looking for. We were able to give them signalized access, we were able to site plan them up on the road, and in addition to the fresh market, some others are following them, Ulta, mini restaurants, boutiques, and shops. We're very excited about this project. We think it's gonna be wonderful for the community, and we plan to do something that's gonna be very, very nice architecturally. We think it's gonna be very synergistic with the community. We realize that any project that you do in any municipality, there are always questions, there are always concerns. The first thing we did in trying to determine how to do this and making sure we were doing this the right way is we met with planning. We've met with planning, we've met with planning, we've met with planning, with traffic, with the entire staff, making sure that what we were doing was being done exactly the way that they wanted, from a traffic standpoint, from a site plan standpoint, from an interconnectivity standpoint. They really have been involved in this process all along the way. In addition, we've met with members of the community that are in neighborhoods that are in relative close proximity to the project. We have met with members of the Saluda Springs community, the townhome community that's down Saluda Springs Road. We've met with the members of the Hope Ferry community, the Hope Ferry HOA, and there are some concerns, and to the best of our ability, we have tried to address all of those concerns. Traffic concerns, buffering concerns, everything that seems to be of concern to those neighbors. We've done everything we can to address those concerns. Our civil engineer will speak to some of those things that we've done here shortly. Again, we're very excited about this opportunity. We appreciate you hearing this today, and we hopefully look forward to working with you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Jim Gamble, I'm with Color Engineering out of Charlotte, North Carolina, and we're the land planners, civil engineers, and landscape architects for the project. I'm at a little disadvantage at the point of our PowerPoint, to be able to see where we are from the photo. I think I can see that. But we're very excited to be here and be part of Columbia Development's team. I will mention, we also have our traffic consultant, Mike Ridgeway, here as well, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you have following our pre-presentation. The project itself, as you know, is located on Sunset Road, and your first slide you see here is just the location of the site. You see it's a long linear piece of property, and you can see the other commercial development on the aerial photograph along Sunset Road. In our next slide, we'd like to indicate, it's there, as part of this process, of course, annexation part of the process and the site planning process, and we're here today to look at the site plan approval, which will therefore move us into, hopefully an annexation, into the town of Lexington. As you can see, from a commercial development standpoint and everything else along Sunset Road, we call it sort of a doughnut hole that's still remaining in the county, but it's a strong desire of the outlaw family and our client to be able to move this into the city of Lexington for many purposes, which I'm sure you can understand. As Jenkins said, Mr. Williamson said, a couple of things that we've done in terms of our process. Excellent, thank you. I won't be too redundant on that, but we've had multiple meetings over the last year and a half with John and his staff in the town of Lexington, with Randy Edwards, DOT, to understand from the town's perspective what would be most beneficial from a site development standpoint and a site design standpoint, traffic included and transportation included. As Mr. Williamson said, we've had multiple community meetings with the surrounding neighbors, and again, worked very hard to understand those concerns and be able to work towards solution and do everything we can to take care of those concerns from the adjacent property owners, because the success of this project is dependent on the surrounding community and the town of Lexington, obviously. We are offering, again, transportation solutions along Sunset Boulevard and Saluda Springs, and we can talk about that more specifically later, I'm sure there may be some questions about that, but what we are doing on behalf of the town, and there are suggestions, is connecting back through, and we'll see that on the site plan, over to Saluda Springs and offering stop situation there and some additional signage and so forth, to do everything we can to protect the residents down at Saluda Springs from any traffic whatsoever. We're offering opaque screening, maintaining existing vegetation all along the property lines as it abuts residential and uses to a very strong degree at a very, very cost with retaining walls and so forth. Supplemental plantings, screening, fencing, everything we can, again, in respect to the neighbors, to protect their properties also. One thing that's very important on this property too, is we saw, it's very lineal in nature, we'll look at that on the site plan, but we say we're preserving over 25% of the property as natural state and undisturbed, and if it weren't for the detention pond, if you took the detention pond back as undeveloped condition also, it would be approximately a third of the site would be preserved in a natural state and unbuilt. And then again, again, to elaborate what Mr. Williamson said, the high quality retailers that are attracted to this market and that will come to this property are a very important, high quality part of what we're trying to bring to this town of Lexington. So if we look at the site plan, and I'll be glad to go into any detail we can, as you can see, the adjacencies and the existing vegetation at the rear of the property, the big pond in the back is our detention pond, it may be a little smaller than that, we're trying to be, just graphically understand the size of that pond in relation to what we're gonna need to do in terms of our sanitation, road control, and our stormwater management. We want to do everything we can to meet or exceed all those requirements. But what we're proposing is, off of Sunset, improved signalized condition on the traffic. We'll have a drop lane and an acceleration lane on Sunset. We've got, one thing from a transportation perspective is, if you can look at our entry drive, we've got a very deep, what we call a deep throat into the site, which will allow ease of movement in and out of the site with very little congestion and very little opportunity for any problems there. The first building to the southern part of the site, that's where the grocery stores intended, the fresh market is intended with shops. We have some other shops, a larger box retailer in the back, and then other shops along the commercial uses up along Sunset. And then, as we mentioned earlier on that site plan, we are connecting back over Saluda Springs at the request of DOT, of Randy and his team, to connect in and give another part of, I guess we'll call a relief valve, for some of the traffic, to help some of the traffic in and out, and also allow some of the traffic from the neighborhoods coming from the west, ease of access into the shopping center for their convenience as well. The next slide indicates some section studies we wanted to elaborate on. If you can see up in the section B, up at the very top of the screening, see where that occurs on the site plan, and you can see in that section some of the elevation and the retaining wall that we'll build in that way to protect the existing vegetation along the buffer. We're offering over 70 feet of buffer, but if you look at from the building to the property line, there's well over 120 feet, in some cases, it's an angled property line, so worst case, it's approximately 120 feet adjacent to that property line, from the building to the property line, and it grows to over 170 feet towards, as you move on back into the property. But special care and effort will be made to protect that existing vegetation along the residential adjacencies, and also with additional screening, fencing, and additional screening, planting and screening. On the section A, which is to the rear of the property along Saluda Springs, the townhomes there, you can see that there'll be very little, if any, visibility into the site from the townhomes, and again, we're protecting the existing vegetation, supplemental planting, and then our detention pond in the back, and there will be fencing along the backside of that property too. If you're right down Saluda Springs, we went and looked at it again this morning, there's a little perm on the back of that too, so we feel like we're doing everything possible to protect those neighbors and the community of Saluda Springs. And as we move to the next slide, the building elevations, and this is an example, I'd like to elaborate on this a little bit, the example of the high quality development that Columbia is known for, and that we enjoy working with them because they are of quality development. This is just architectural rendering, schematic drawing with the fresh market, and this will give you a little bit of flavor of the architectural character of the building. Some things may change a little bit, but this again is sort of the vernacular, so to speak, of how the architecture would be treated throughout the center, and it'll be consistent throughout the center, it won't be different architectural features on different buildings throughout the center, so we're trying to create a build-ist type environment there as well. So with that, be welcome to any questions you might have that I can answer, Mr. Williamson can answer, or our traffic consultant, Mike Ridgeway, can answer.
And I'm sure we do, and I'll start, I've got two questions. Yes, sir. It's about things that you've said. You mentioned fencing along the residential. That includes both sides as well as the rear property you're gonna have fencing?
What's intended for the fencing is along the northern part of the property as it abuts the development. It will not occur all the way around the property as our intent right now, but along Saluda Springs, the townhomes, we would take the fencing approximately a third of the way back on that property line. It's sort of a function of the grade elevation as well, where the sight lines, just need some opaque screening there. And then on the northern side, against a single-family residential, again, from the building itself on the site plan, would be our intention to take it about a third of the way back, and then you just resolve back to the natural vegetative state.
Okay.
We'll be happy to entertain any suggestions on that as well.
Yes, sir.
The Hope Ferry, members of the Hope Ferry community asked specifically about fencing on their side of the project. They wanted it for two reasons. They wanted it for screening, and they also wanted it for security purposes. And in the meeting that we had with the Hope Ferry community in the, I guess upstairs in the room here, we said that we would do that, and we're happy to do that.
Okay. All right, the other issue, and maybe I misheard you, but you indicated there's a decelerate on Sunset Boulevard, a decelerate lane, and you said accelerate lane.
That's right.
So the sketch plan or the site plan that we're seeing here does not show an acceleration lane, it shows a decelerate lane. And I guess, I think your traffic engineer, does this make one to talk about that?
That was misspoken. We're not gonna have an acceleration lane on 378.
All right, but you're at a stoplight.
You're at a stoplight, and we don't want someone getting into an acceleration lane and making traffic get over. There will be a deceleration lane coming from Columbia or I-20 for movements into the site, and then a striped, dedicated left turn lane coming from Lexington.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, any other questions for the developer? All right, hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, I apologize for that misinformation.
That's all right, thank you. And I see we do have a bunch of folks here this morning. I'm gonna ask to please help me here, if you are here with a group of people, we would ask that you please nominate someone to speak from your group, just so that we don't hear the same discussion 15 times. We understand, I think, a lot of what your concerns are, we've received the emails, but we also do want to hear from you this morning. So if you can, appoint someone to speak so that we don't continue to rehash the same issues. I would ask that you please limit your comments to five minutes if possible, and with that, when you come forward, please introduce yourself and let us know where you live for the record, please.
Good morning, Tony Barfield, I'm with Property Management Solutions here in Lexington at 201 West Main Street. I am the managing HOA agent for the Whiteford Homeowners Association and the Saluda Springs Homeowners Association, and I'm here to speak on both of their behalfs and to express their concerns with what they, what we are already seeing in both of these communities as far as traffic and congestion, and to try to help calm some ease. Although the, both developments are, we're all for the development, we're great, we love the fact that we've got these new developments coming to Lexington, our issue is with the side street, is with the side entrance that comes off onto Saluda Springs Drive. Being with the town and being in what I do for a business, I understand the town's need for connectivity. I hear it all the time on TV, listening to you guys talk about this. However, the connectivity that we're talking about behind the fresh market actually comes out onto a privately owned and privately maintained road that's owned by the Saluda Springs and HOA, okay? It is the cut through between Saluda Springs and Whiteford Way. It is the desire that that road not be used for the purpose of this development. Reasons for that is, we hear their understanding about the signage and how the signage is gonna control traffic into the Saluda Springs subdivision. Currently, there is signage there, we do not have a development on site, and we're already seeing an increase in traffic into the neighborhood. They're not adhering to the signs, we are already seeing damage at the entrance ways. If you drive into the neighborhood, you'll see where there's, they're pulling up into the common areas and turning around, because there's no other way out of the neighborhood. There's no outlet. Additional signage, to me, into the communities is not going to make it look any better. Four-way stops, you know, it's just gonna jam up that intersection. The other concern is, you know, first of all, the HOA owns 61% of that, okay? They're only buying into 7%, so they're really against this road being used for that purpose. It is my understanding from the board president of Saluda Springs, that that board has actually approved to put speed bumps and possibly gate that privately maintained road to help ease this situation with the traffic. Second of the three points with this, Whiteford Way, everybody knows that Whiteford Way is a cut through from number six, Lake Murray, all the way over to 378. In May, we had a traffic study done, we had 29,000 cars over a nine-day period with 57 traffic tickets written to those individuals who were in excess of 15 miles an hour on Whiteford Way. That's 15 miles an hour over the posted speed limit, and running stop signs. Currently, Whiteford has four sets of four-way stop signs in the Whiteford community, and in any given day, if you follow the traffic through Whiteford, they do not stop at those stop signs. In every town or every homeowner meeting that we've had in the last two years in the Whiteford community, we've had 120 to 140 of those homeowners show up who live predominantly along the Whiteford Way from number six to 378. Their biggest complaint is traffic, is traffic and speed. It's turned into basically a thoroughfare from Lake Murray, the Lake Murray area, over to Lexington. The third point that we have with this entrance and traffic is, we understand there's gonna be a need for construction entrance. The DOT and the town, North County, want that traffic entering and exiting 378 during construction. Reason being, current construction going on on 378 right now with the nursing home next to Golden Hills, everybody's already seeing the damage that's creating on 378, and is also seeing the traffic problems that it's creating with those trucks trying to get in and out during afternoon traffic. Anybody who rides up and down 378 right now, or who will be riding up and down 378 come Friday when it rains, will get a taste of what we're dealing with right now with that project, because that project is currently a mess up there with dirt, debris. So, these are the concerns with the HOA. Everybody, I think, behind me, if I'm correct, is riding possibly to the left or are with these two communities. We understand that they've spoken with Hope Ferry, and the impact on Hope Ferry is a whole lot less than it's going to be on Saluda Springs and to the Whiteford community as the traffic is going to increase tremendously in those two neighborhoods overall.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
How many total residents are in Whiteford?
We have 534 homes in Whiteford.
Any other questions, Senator Tony?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned something about on the privately owned road, about speed bumps or gating. I'd like the town engineer to clarify to me if that's possible.
I can't guarantee that that's not possible, but it is an access that was part of the original development to gain access to the signal for the Saluda Springs subdivision, and it is private, was never turned over to the county, but as far as I know from the county, it cannot be gated. Whether or not it can be speed bumped is another discussion, you know what I mean? Because that's not, because it is their road. But gated, because it is an access, okay, so fire service, police, et cetera, have to be able to use that. So gate, just like it would on any private subdivision, you know what I mean, it's not permissible unless you meet certain criteria, and it's my understanding that that road doesn't meet that criteria.
So, so it's a privately owned, privately and maintained road with public access?
Correct. That's the way I understand it from the county.
Okay.
And we've talked a little bit this morning, and I think what we would encourage, and at least I'm gonna throw this out there, is if maintenance is a concern, I think it's prudent at this point to approach the town and begin discussions about turning that road over to the town for maintenance and making it a public road.
I don't think maintenance is their big, I don't think maintenance is-
That seemed to be the issue in 90% of the emails we got, and I do want to clarify one comment that you made, and one of the very first things you said was, the access coming out to the east side of this property is accessing a private road. That is incorrect. That's something that has been, we've heard for the last three days, is that they're accessing a private road. They are not. They are accessing Saluda Springs, which my understanding is a public road.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, it is across the street from a private road, but we, and I think what you heard this morning is, this group, and you watched us enough to know, connectivity is a huge issue for us. Had they proposed this project without some access to Saluda Springs, I think you would have heard us tell the developer we'd like to see that. So they've brought it to us. I don't think it's a bad thing to have the connectivity over there, but I'm not sure that the private road is something we have a purview or that we can get involved in a discussion with. We don't regulate it, it's not our road, they're accessing a public road, I'm not sure we can get into the fight over whether or not their traffic uses your road. I mean, that's just, that's outside of where we're going. You know, were they accessing your road, then yes, I think we would have that ability to have the discussion, but since they're accessing public roads on both sides, I'm not sure it's something this group can really get in-depthly involved in as far as that discussion. So, there were a couple of other things that you mentioned, and you talked about the debris or the damage that's being done over by the burger place, the Smash Burger. I assume you're talking about trackout from trucks, which is something that-
Well, that, we actually had a dump truck dump quite loaded dirt on 378 a couple days ago.
And those are, well, those are things that are required to be addressed through stormwater controls and through site plans, and as you see those, I would encourage you to let the town know. We have folks that are here this morning, can go out and make sure that those items are addressed, and that should not be a significant issue for our folks as we go through development. Other questions for Mr. Barfield? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate you being here. We have other folks that would like to speak.
My name is Teresa Coolidge, and I'm a resident of Hope Ferry Plantation. I'm actually here speaking more on, not necessarily from Hope Ferry Plantation, but from all the citizens of Lexington. As you know, the greatest problem in Lexington is the traffic.
Yes.
Okay. And from what I understand, a traffic study was done and approved by the traffic director? And who would that be? I had a chance to go through it and look at some of the specifics and- I had a chance to go through it and look at some of the specifics. And I personally believe, and I think that a lot of citizens of Lexington would also agree with me, that approval of that traffic study is actually a disservice to the citizens. Okay? Let me bring up a couple of things. First of all, the study said it will add 5,320 cars a day to that area. Okay? It did not address also that those 5,320 cars are going to be at Hope Ferry Road and 378. They're also going to be down at Old Cherokee Road and 378, Route 6 and 378. So, we have a traffic problem right now that's only going to get worse. Okay? In the traffic study, there was table three, and there are several intersections that go from one rating, they rate them A through F, they go from B to a D. Okay? I have a high school student, and if he came home with a D after getting a B, there would be a lot of work done in order to rectify that. Okay? My understanding is that they have some mitigating points, but Schedule C shows that three intersections are going to go from one rating to another, which is worse. It also doesn't address the problem of Corley Mill Road as an additional input to the town. I know it's a county road, right, in the county. However, whenever there's a problem on Corley Mill or Route 1, it all comes to 378. So, add a few accidents, add a problem on Corley Mill Road, such as flooding or the bridge being repaired, or another development going on Corley Mill Road, they're all going to come to 378. It affects the quality of the citizens of the town. I don't, I don't have a solution for it other than the fact that the traffic needs to be fixed first before anything is added to the town. Whether it be a community development, a retail development, or whatever, it's just, has to be fixed. I mean, if you, if it takes me 50 minutes to get from my office, which is actually down halfway to I-20 on 378 in the evening, two miles away to get to the Hope Ferry Plantation intersection, it's a real crime. I think that's it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Randy, do you want to address any of those points? And I guess the one I would like for you to address, and she pointed it out, is the change in grade for intersections.
Mike Ridgeway is the developer's traffic engineer. And the one thing that I can, I mean, when we talk about traffic grading or signal, or intersection grades, they're not quite the same as when you go to school and are taking calculus or English or whatever, that you get such a drastic drop. The thing that's happening at the Palmetto Park Boulevard is that it's going from a three-legged intersection with frankly, a low volume, to a four-legged intersection. Now, it is the intent that that will actually work as a, I mean, that the movements will happen at the same time, but obviously, a little more time will need to go there. And then, come on up.
Randy's correct. There's not a whole lot of traffic that comes out of Palmetto Park right now. There's some, but that traffic doesn't have to yield to anyone right now because it's a T-intersection. One of the good things about this project is, we're making use of an existing intersection so that Palmetto Park and the side access can work together. When it stops 378, there'll be green that's shared by both movements. That's the reason for the change to the level of service D. I think that's the best thing to do. What you want to avoid in a situation like this is what we call split phasing, where we have 378 stop, takes 30 seconds to service Palmetto Park, then it stops, takes 30 seconds to service the development. It's much more efficient for it to operate this way. I would also point out that the 5,200 cars that she's mentioned, a lot of the traffic for this project will be passed by traffic and will already be out on 378. You'll have some diverted traffic as well. People that now shop at one grocery store that come to another. Certainly, the project's going to add traffic. But the main intent is to make use of the existing infrastructure that's there. We're not introducing any new intersection to 378. And I also understand the concerns about the connectivity, but it only makes sense for residents of Whiteford and Saluda Springs to be able to get to this project without getting on 378. That's the whole point. Or for trips to occur between this project and additional retail. That traffic should not be going past our access on Saluda Springs. If they are, then there's nowhere to go back there but to the development. And perhaps there can be some additional signage that's put up to address that issue.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Coolidge, I'm going to give you two minutes and a minute, but this is not a debate. It's a public meeting. So, please give us what you got to give us because we'd be here all day if we're going to go back and forth over each fine point, okay? So, I'll be, just let Randy finish and then we'll come right back to you for a couple of minutes.
I do want to just quickly comment more globally on the traffic situation because we all obviously know it's frankly, the reason I have a job. But, very true. Anyway, long-term, our plan is to actually address the traffic situation. And you may not notice it immediately, but we are in the process of putting computerized adaptive programming on every single intersection along 378 as well as other locations throughout the town. And I'm happy to report that while we've turned on five of the intersections currently, we have actually seen an improvement in the actual free flow, both on Main Street as well as on the, from Park to Butler on 378. Those five intersections have actually had the adaptive turned on. I will publicly comment that this week, however, Main Street was turned back off just to do some testing and whatnot. So, the times have actually gone back up, which I checked several times. And so, we have seen a decrease. And so, that system that we've put in place has actually improved the maneuverability throughout that small section of town right now. That's what's coming and will be in place in or about the same time that this development, as well as the other development, will actually come online. So, those types of things aren't reflected in the scoring here, what the current movements are. So, when you see a delay, that's based on today's operations. And so, as our operations come on board, you will see, it may be nominal during peak hour, but, you know, at Mineral Springs, at Whiteford Way, you will start to see some improvements because of what we can do with the computer model and how that system will actually work.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Coolidge, again, and I don't mean to be short. I just, we want to hear what you guys have to say and hear your thoughts, but we'd be here all day if we go back and forth with the developer, so.
The 5,320 cars is actually the net, taking into consideration that 8,220 cars are actually coming in every day minus 35% bypass traffic, which is what the net then is the 5,340. So, just to make sure that that number is understood. The other thing about, you said that not a lot of traffic comes through Palmetto Park. I believe there's a, an apartment building down there, and I don't know how many residents are down there. So- There's fire trucks down there. There's-
If you're going to speak, please come to the microphone so we can hear you and they can see you on TV. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Kim Kearns. I live at 336 Saluda Springs Road. I have a couple of concerns. Number one, the thing that a lot of people aren't thinking about is all the, the ground around Saluda Springs is soggy. If they're-
Retention pond?
I don't know much about soil, but I do know that that ground is soggy. If you're going to start building and if rainwater's going to wash down, how is that going to affect our neighborhood? Who drove through our neighborhood this morning?
Not this morning.
Nobody. Did you see all the water running off? That runs off on the signs?
Yes.
Okay. I'm concerned about that. And as far as I know, nobody has even addressed me as to what's going on. I mean, they say they've done all these studies, but have y'all seen anything? Okay. Number two, the traffic. I work right across the street at Columbia Cardiovascular. And I'm not sure, are they planning, are you guys planning on the traffic to come in between the Lazy Boy and the Domino's and to turn there? Or are you proposing that it goes over to Whiteford to the light and turns there?
Well, I mean, again, we're not, we're not going to debate.
I know you're not going to debate, but I lived there. I wouldn't know what's going on.
Ms. Kearns, if, please make your comments. We will ask the developer to address your concerns if you have a question. But again, if we have folks standing up and going back and forth, we're going to be here all day.
I'm sorry.
And I understand, I understand your concern, and I think that's a good question to ask.
I'm trying to understand what's going on.
Okay. So, if, what would help is, if you would speak into the microphone and address them to us. They're here. They're going to hear you. And then we'll make sure we write them down and have them address them.
Okay. I'm concerned about the traffic. I'm concerned about the tractor trailer rigs that are going to be coming in there to deliver all these products into this facility. What roads are they going to use? How is that going to affect traffic? The Top Spin Plaza has a lot of traffic coming in and out of it. There's one, two, three, four, four little spots coming in and out on that side, even before you get to the traffic light at Palmetto Park Boulevard. Are they planning on people turning left there, coming out of Saluda Springs? Are they going to turn right? Are they proposing that people go down to Whiteford? And if they do that, are they going to go through that access road? And I don't know if you guys have ever been there, but I go there all the time. There's a lot of traffic. And it backs up to the daycare center. So, you know, those are just concerns I have. I'm just trying to figure out what's going on because the traffic there is horrible. I worked, I, I'm there every day. I can look out my window and see traffic. And I don't know that, you know, I just would love to see the traffic studies.
Okay.
And I'd like to know about that. And I would love to know about how it's going to affect our water and how it's going to affect the property. Because as of right now, the ground's so saturated in the whole neighborhood, when we walk aside, psh, psh.
And I will tell you, it's the same way in my neighborhood, the same way in every neighborhood in South Carolina, I think. I mean, with the amount of rain we've had, it is, there's water running across every street I drove this morning to get here. There's water running across the streets.
And that's, that's a great point. So, what if it continues to rain and rain and rain? What is that going to do to our development if you're building up?
That's the reason he has a stormwater pond. That is to capture the water that's coming off of his site.
Okay. So, you're going to, you're going to knock down all those beautiful trees?
No, because he's not developing that property.
He's going to put a retention pond back there?
Yes. The part that he develops will be captured by a detention pond.
And the detention or retention pond looks like it's at least half, if not, one-third to half the size of what your building site looks like?
And that is, that is designed according to EPA standards for capturing and retaining the amount of water he's required to.
Okay.
There are rules that are designed to make sure that that's adequately sized.
Okay. If they're, okay. Well, then, so if they're-
I think Dwayne was telling me about some lawsuits, Dwayne.
All right.
And just lawsuits on another, where the Lowe's is in that other neighborhood where there's water.
And that's, we're not going to get into those things in this discussion.
I know, but people have to understand, we have to live there and live there.
I understand that. I understand that. And I do want to speak to that because, you know, what we've heard, I think Ms. Coolidge mentioned it, and Tony mentioned it, was quality. You know, we are here to try and understand what your concerns are, address those concerns as best we can. We're not going to solve the traffic issues in Lexington today. The plan that they've given us, I think-
They're going to make it worse.
The plan that they've given us has, I think, got aspects to it, which, one of which is the access to Saluda Springs that are going to help alleviate hopefully, some traffic concerns. I don't think you're going to find a lot of folks that are going to want to drive through Whiteford when there's a signalized intersection right up at the front of the thing. Yeah, I just, I don't see that as being a-
So, what if that does become a problem?
Please, please let me finish. You know, so I don't know that it is, but when we talk about quality, you know, we've got an email from the Lexington County because we asked, okay, this property is in the county. If the developer comes to you and wants to develop this, what do you think? How would your standards apply? What we got back from the county would, there would be zero buffering, screening, and setbacks for this because it's an intensive develop, that's the way it's defined in the county. So, what we have here is an opportunity for us to control this growth. That's going to happen. I'm sorry. This is a piece of property that's in Lexington that is not going to sit there as three single-family residential houses for much longer.
I'm not, I'm not debating the structure. I'm debating whether they are appropriately going to have all the-
And what I'm trying-
Everything for us not to be affected by it.
Okay. Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
All right. You know, and again, part of what we're trying to do here is to make sure that that happens. And through some of the discussions that we've had this morning, you know, we know there are traffic concerns. We know there are other concerns. We think this is the best opportunity for us, if the property's going to be developed, to do it in the town with the appropriate restriction setbacks and to protect that quality of life. All right. Real quickly, Ms. Coolidge.
Well, just one last point. I know that you all represent the citizens of Lexington. They vote you in, or I don't know how you're appointed, but-
No, ma'am. We are appointed by council.
You're appointed. I know that the town council is elected in, but you serve the citizens. And I think that if you polled the citizens of Lexington as to whether they want to have additional traffic on 378 or a retail development, the answer is going to be no.
Okay. Yes, I see one more. Yes, please come on.
Two minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Come on.
Good morning. My name is Fern Rothman, and I live at Fort Ten, Saluda Springs.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Fort Ten, Fern Rothman, R-O-T-H-M-A-N.
All right.
I'm here to listen. I'm not here to debate, but I have to tell you how it is to live there. There's a reason why on Saluda Springs Road that there's a 20 mile an hour speed limit. I can tell you firsthand. I walk my grandson. My mom and I walk to the very end. We see cars, I live at the very end by the dead end. I see cars turn around because they think it is a cut through. It's not a good situation now. But I can tell you firsthand, when I lost my dad, that the police couldn't even come to my home. The police cars went to his home, had to stay at the end because there wasn't enough room for the fire truck to come. So, this is the way the situation is. It is not a private road. Kids ride their bikes there. We see cars. I myself, kids don't realize it's a dead end. They ride all around. We enjoy it there. If we have a cut through, it's going to be much worse. And you're right, it does affect the quality of our life. So, whatever happens around me, I get it, but living on Saluda Springs Road, it will change our life. And as of now, the road is so narrow that even the three police cars parked, and I had to run and get them. So, you have to think about that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Have someone else.
My name is Ed Elreck. I'm from 14 Carrot. And I'm surprised that you've, that included in the plan is a connectivity going the other direction. You know, I would like to see connectivity all the way down to Hope Ferry Road.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Because we've had this discussion several times with your project specifically, and we've been told that you, you blocked that.
No.
So that's a little surprising to hear that this morning.
Just for the record, nobody ever called me. I had no idea that, that was being planned. I never saw it planned.
So that, the whole Hobby Lobby on the other side, you never knew anything about? Nobody approached you?
I talked to the developer two weeks before your meeting. He never told me about it.
Okay. All right. And I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that because that, you know, that is something we've looked at for years to try to do is to get folks out to that, to that stoplight where you're at.
That everybody should have access to that light. That intersection needs to be improved. I'm willing to spend money on it. I'd like to see the development next to me spend money on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, please.
My name's Karen Campbell. I live on 393 East Bruce Glenn Road. I'm actually the property that the development will back up to. And as far as I know, when I looked at it, it was 100 feet, not 120 feet. I'm in the back of Hope Ferry Plantation and where the corner of Hobby Lobby would be. I'd just like to say, I think it's a little bit too much property. It's a lot of development, a lot of buildings for that piece of narrow tractable land. So I do have concerns about that. I told them about that during the, during the thing. So I just had, really had two questions. One, was there an environmental study done on, on any, on any of the property? Were there any concerns with that? And number two, I would just, would ask if there would be a couple of people maybe from the Planning Commission, I don't know if y'all have actually walked the property, but you're welcome to go back behind my house and walk back there because the creek goes back in my house. So part of the creek is on.
Yeah, wait.
Right, right, right. Okay. So part of the creek is on, is on our land, part of the creek is on our land, and then our property line cuts back. So anyway, I just would like for y'all to be concerned because when they talk about the buffer, I know it's 70 feet, 70 feet of land and then 100 feet to the building. So the way the property is sloped, I know there's a plan to plant trees. I don't think the trees are going to necessarily grow that way. So I mean, I appreciate it, but I just think with the land, you know, the way that it's shaped, I, I don't know that all those trees and buffering are going to work. So anyway, I just wanted to, like I said, encourage y'all, if y'all haven't walked the property, to, to go back and look and actually see where the property lines are and where that building's supposed to be. It's just super close to our property line, and, and I'm just not sure that the buffering plans are going to work. I appreciate that, but anything y'all could do to kind of help with that, because it's going to be really right in my backyard, the corner of that building, and all the lights and the lane going around it.
Well, and that, you know, there is a, you're, you're right. It's, the zoning requires a 70-foot buffer and 100-foot setback.
Right.
Am I correct there, John? And, and that's what they've, they've drawn here. Now, again, he may, that's what it's required. He may give you additional space. There may be another 20 feet that he goes. I, I think if I'm not mistaken, the buffer and setback that's being offered on this side behind your property is identical to what is being done on the other side where Hope Ferry kind of behind Walgreens, that, that your neighbors over there are, are being offered as well. I think that, I think this is the same setback and buffering requirement there. So again, it, it, it meets, I mean, they're, they're going to have to deal with, you know, making sure that vegetation grows and that they provide you adequate screening, whether it's fencing, trees, a combination of that. And we will make sure they do that. As far as an environmental study, I don't know that we do necessarily an official environmental study as if, you know, an impact study, but they will have to delineate any wetlands and make sure that they protect those. So from an environmental standpoint, that will have to be done, and I think there may be some of that on the backside as you get towards the creek. So that may be one of the reasons they're not doing anything back there is to, in order to protect that. But those will have to be addressed and identified as they move forward.
Right. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. All right.
Mr. Chairman, can we make a motion?
We have one more person that would like to speak. Please come forward.
My name is Dwayne Fisher. I live at 340 Saluda Springs Road. I want to thank you for your time this morning. Got lots of more information, so I feel better about some things, but a few questions have come up, and one thing you just mentioned is, when I moved into my place, I was told that the, behind me is zoned to wetland. Therefore, it would not be developed. I'd always have my nice trees. And it sounds like that may be a question, either I had bad information when I moved in, or that has not yet been determined that we know what the area is back there. That's one thing I have a question on.
Okay.
Secondly, on the civil engineering study, when, when the firm got up, or got up, I thought we'd actually get more civil engineering stuff as opposed to what the building looks like. My, I'm a degree in engineer. I'm not a civil engineer. I don't know hydrant out, you know, water and all that. But I do know that we're at the bottom of a hill. There's a, there's a water issue, and I really need to get flood insurance. To get flood insurance, I need to get a civil engineering study done to get that done so I can apply for it. If they change the landscape and have 170-foot drop, that's going to change that. Who's paying for that? Is the developer going to pay for everyone in our community to get flood insurance? Are they going to pay for flood insurance? I don't know. I mean, it seems to me the homeowners are taking all the risk of losing property value, having to pay for flood insurance, traffic issues, and the developers and fresh farm make money. I'm all for community growth, but it shouldn't hurt the citizens. And the last thing I'll say is, also being an engineer and working things, I understand you can meet every rule and every code, but that doesn't make it right. I also know that EPA pond sizing is based on average rainfall. We have not had average rainfall. I have seen very few places around here where you take up all the trees, put in pavement, and don't have problems. It's just a general rule. And my last open question is, if the gentleman from Charlotte is looking for a home in Saluda Springs, he can come see me if he's that confident in his studies.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right. Do we have any other questions from the commission?
Do I have a property owner, I have a right to say anything?
Real quickly. Yes, sir.
I'm going to try to make it quick. I've been, I moved, built a house there in 1995.
I'm sorry, would you please introduce yourself?
I'm sorry. I'm Tommy Outlaw.
That's right.
And I live on this land.
Okay.
Along with my brother-in-law and the Lieber family estate. And I've been there since 1995, built the house that was going to be our home. And, you know, it's, it's just, it's a commercial area now, and we see that we've got, got to move on. We have worked for over three years to find a class act, so to speak, to put the Lieber family land into. They, the Liebers been there since they were removed from Lake Murray. I don't think they put up this kind of fight when they were moved their house, but, you know, they went along with it. Again, I've been out there since 1995, been a member of Mount Auburn United Methodist Church. We're good people. We're, we're citizens of there. We care. We're lifelong Lexington County residents. The number one issue facing Lexington County residents are taxes. And the only way you're going to do something about taxes is development. It's not traffic. Traffic's a problem. I understand that. But it's a matter of economics. This is not personal. We, these people in Crowe Charlie Land, they tear down our signs, they tear down fences, they put their garbage in it. We didn't complain. We got their cesspool-type retention ponds 10 feet from our property line. We didn't complain. This is economics. Since the Liebers have passed away, our property taxes went up 1,000 percent. Now, I'm not complaining. I understand the economics. I understand the dynamics. Mr. Lieber passed away. He lost his exemptions. We understand all that. We're not complaining. But we can't afford to pay the taxes. My wife went up there and said with the assessor, he said, this is commercial property. You, you know, there's nothing we can do about it. And he's right. We've got to move on. I'd love to stay there. I'd love to stay there, but we can't afford it anymore. We have worked for three years to get this class act development into the town where it would be buffers. It would be protection for our neighbors. If it doesn't sell with these guys, folks, we're going to sell it. It's going to be, and it'll stay in the county, and you'll have multifamily on it. I don't know, but I got to sell it. We can't pay the taxes anymore. And that's all we wanted to say. We tried our best to make this good for everybody, and it's just all we can do. And I could be here all day. I just had to say myself.
Thank you very much.
Property owners do have some problems.
I understand.
I understand.
Thank you. All right. All right. Do we have any further questions from the commission or discussion? All right. Do we have a motion regarding approval of site plan pending final annexation of the Ms. Chairman, I move for approval. All right. We have a motion and at least a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. That is everybody. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And I want to thank you very much for those of you that come out this morning and took your time to, to provide some input and discussion into the process. Thank you very much. The next item we have is, John, is related to proposed annexation of these parcels of property.
Want to give it a second?
Yeah, we'll give one second. Let's go.
The Lieber Family Trust owns 19 acres on three parcels shown under two tax map numbers, located at 5326 Sunset Boulevard, and has petition to annex the property. Properties, a portion of the commercial center we've just been discussing is being planned on these properties. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial and protected residential, and Sunset Boulevard is classified as an arterial road. Due to the surrounding conditions and the intended use of the property, the recommended zoning is general commercial, and the recommended classification of Sunset Boulevard is arterial.
All right. Any discussion?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Motion, my friend.
Second.
Yep. And John, thank you very much. All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item, John?
Cheryl and Thomas Outlaw own 3.1 acres located at the same address and have petition to annex the property. Again, property's in, in this area is zoned general commercial and protected residential, and the intended use, the recommendation for zoning would, based on the intended use, is general commercial and Sunset being an arterial.
All right. Any discussion? We have a motion. Frank makes your motion. We have a second.
Second.
All right. Jean, thank you very much. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Last item, John?
And finally, the third annexation was it, related to this development is a four-point, a .44 acre parcel located at the same address owned by Bryce Wesley Lieber.